Simpson from the Lions Club was gonna join me, but I think he thought we were on a little later. So you'll probably show up here in a little, in a little, little bit. So anyway, you've got your packets from, that we have a design on Man Park. Is, is Adam on at all? Is he on yet?
Uh, he is.
He is on, okay, alright. Okay, so I think what I'll do is, is just kind of give you an idea of what we're planning to do. And, and then if you have any questions and stuff, then I'll try to answer them for you. But this is a, a Lions Club project, Hood River Lions Club project that we wanted to help out with some of the playgrounds in the, in the city. Now, this kind of falls into place with what we've kind of already done with Jackson Park, as you know, we, we've invested over three hundred thousand dollars into Jackson Park already, you know, with the stage and the handicap parking, the stairs going down and all that kind of stuff. But there's another, before I get into this, I will mention that we'll be back next year with another proposal for Jackson Park. We would like to extend, expand and the playground there for handicapped children and toddlers. There's nothing for handicapped kids at all. And so the design would be for kids in wheelchairs and, and other things that, you know, they're providing handicaps for kids that they can participate in that playground as well. So that's what's coming.
Thank you. Please express our gratitude to the club, Mike.
I, I will, I'll do that.
Generous.
Yes, yes, thank you. We're, we're happy to do it. We're happy to do it. And you just are the recipients of all that generosity. So we've chosen the parks, basically, yeah. So anyway, Man Park is the objective here tonight. You'll see the layout on the front page there. There's, there's basically four components. You've got the, the structure, the playground structure that would be for, I would say probably ages five and up, you know, kind of thing. So it's got a lot of climbing apparatus and all kinds of things that, you know, kids I think would have a lot of fun with. Then there's the, the structure in the middle is a toddler structure. Um, and then there's that blob, the kind of weird looking thing on the far right bottom is the merry-go-round. Okay, and then you've got the swings. Yeah, we, we've reduced that down. We had eight swings in there. Um, and because of the size of the footprint of it due to code, you have to have so much spacing in between these different structures. It, it was quite large and even taking off two swings made a big impact on that footprint. Um, so, and then you see that there's three benches for, for people to sit. Those are included in this. Those are the resin and steel post type benches that'll be installed in there. Okay? So, um, in the swing set, you'll see that there's one odd looking swing on the end. That's called a parent-child swing. So the parent gets in the swing with them and it could also be for handicapped children as well. It's all adaptable for that. And then you're just gonna, you know, turn the pages there. It kind of gives you a different viewpoints of the structures and stuff. There's, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory. Um, until we get to, let me see what page I'm dealing with here. Where I want to go and they're not numbered unfortunately. I'll get there. Okay, if you, if you go to probably about six pages to the back from the very back, you'll see a little different layout of it. And then if you turn the page, this one, it looks like a pink blob on a psychological test, but, but that's a, that's kind of gives you all of the apparatus that is part of that playground structure. Yeah, let's see what else. Okay, here, this, this thing here, that page shows you the toddler structure a little more detail there. By the way, this was all designed by the Burke Company, which we had chosen. We've dealt with a number of companies that, that looked at different playground options. This is the one we chose because they, not only we thought they were the, um, the best price, but they were, they seemed to be the most easy to deal with. I guess that would be the way I'd describe that. Uh, some of them care, I get the impression someone could care less if they got our business or not. And they must be really busy, uh, to ignore you, but we had a few companies ignore us and that was goodbye. Okay, so the, the, there's more details than this. Uh, Abigail, you've got a more detailed copy. You got the warranty and all that stuff for the equipment and so forth. And let me get into the financial part of this. Um, what the club is going to do is we're gonna send you a check for eighty-two thousand dollars. Now, that's gonna cover the cost of the equipment and the installation. Burke Company will come and install it. Uh, that, that, that brings the warranty into play. So you don't have anything to do with that. The city would not put it together. Um, and then there's a little bit of extra money in there, uh, for the border. That black line going around it is gonna be a concrete border. And then Adam uh, is going to, uh, he is requesting that you do a poured-in-place rubber surface. Okay, so they have to have a border enough to hold that in because it's bringing, it's liquid when it comes in. So it has to hold that. And so the money that the Lions would give the city would also have a little bit on that concrete, um, border, uh, which I, is Adam on or not? Is he on? He's on? Okay. I think, uh, can he hear me okay or not? Adam, did you, Adam, did you say the border was about seventy-two hundred dollars?
The border was just under eight thousand dollars.
Okay, so with the eighty-two thousand that we are going to write a check to the city of Hood River, um, there's a little bit of, uh, not just the insulation and installation and equipment, but there's a little bit extra in there to help for that concrete border. Okay? And then the poured-in-place product is up to you guys how you want to handle that. That would be part of your, your budget, you know, and I think you've already allocated a considerable amount for that. It's, it's really, uh, it's nice to have something like that because it, it's maintenance-free basically and it's safe. Um, what originally in the, in this proposal, they had put in engineered, uh, wood fiber. And, uh, and then Adam felt that it, it would be better if we had something like the poured-in-place product instead. So you'll see that in the, if you look at that, you'll see it in there that it's, this particular bid had that in there and we're just, we're just sending more money to you to cover the equipment, as I said, all of the installation costs and a little bit for that concrete border. Probably about five grand, I think, and if it's eight, so you'll have about three, so three thousand to, to cover on that. That's the way I'm figuring it. I hope I'm correct, but so that's, that's what it is. Okay, so the, the one thing I want to tell you is that Burke Company has been warning us on the equipment because just like everything else, the first of the year in increases. And if you don't order the equipment by the end of December, you're gonna probably end up paying another five, six, seven hundred dollars, which you probably don't want to do if you can order it now. We're gonna get you a check as soon as we can. I mean, I'd probably get a check to you this week even. Uh, so you can, I think you can just order everything, uh, as, or unless you want me to place the order and just say the city of Hood River is gonna pay for it. Do you want me to do it that way?
Abigail, what would you like?
I think Adam has been talking to you about this, but I think, um, I'm not sure. I think it was you would write us a check and then we would place the order.
But I'll, yes, you're paying for it. That, that way then it gives you the warranty aspect of this as well because if we paid for it,
Right.
then that's the warranties with us.
Yeah.
We don't want that.
Yeah, I agree.
Adam, you have anything, is there anything you need from us, Adam? Any direction?
Uh, so I've spoke with Mike about, um, the, the payment and the warranty and yes, it would be easier if we, uh, we place the order and then the Lions Club cut the city a check. And I've talked with Chris about that as well.
Okay, so, um, again, the, the main thing is to get it ordered, uh, before the end of the year. And like I said, if you want me, Abigail, if you want me to order it, I can order it and then I'll just say you're paying for it. They'll invoice you. You want me to do that? That way it gets ordered?
I'm leaving that up to Adam.
Adam, what do you want to do?
We can talk offline.
Yep, Mike, I'll take care of this with you this week.
Okay, that sounds fair enough, fair enough.
Mike, Councilor Rivera has a question.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, so understand the installation or the ordering will take place as soon as possible. When would this actually be installed?
Adam, that's your question.
It'll be installed as soon as we can get on Man Park. So, um, I know there's, it, it's, it's a couple of months out just getting the, the playground equipment. So, um, as soon as we can get on Man Park, uh, this spring, we'll, uh, we'll get in there and, uh, we'll do the prep on the site and then, um, the, uh, the install team will install the, uh, the playground equipment and then, uh, we'll do the prep for the pour-in-place and then, uh, um, the, the folks with the pour-and-play will come out and install that. So basically, as soon as we, as soon as we can get, get on the, on the grass, uh, without making a huge mess at Man Park, uh, uh, we'll get on it.
How many weeks do you think the neighborhood will be locked down at the park, Adam?
I, I, I can't give you like a, a firm answer on that as far as timeline goes. I do know that, uh, just based on ordering the equipment, that, uh, we should be able to get the, the timeline with the pour-in-place folks and the install folks, uh, tighten that, that, uh, that timeline up. But as far as like an actual, how many days, at this point, I, I cannot tell you like an exact number of days that, that the park will be shut down.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Um, thank you, coming, Mike. Uh, I have a couple of questions and they may be for you or for Adam, but, um, the footprint of this, is this similar to a footprint of the existing structures? Is this covering the whole lot of Man Park?
This is, well, that's a good question. I, I think it's might be a little bigger than the footprint that's currently there because it really is no border on what's there.
Right.
It's just you got an old structure with a, with a slide and then you've got the merry-go-round and then you've got some swings. But there's really no border to say this is the footprint of that.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I guess is, is this covering the whole lot or will there still be open grass?
Oh, there'll be another open grass, lot of grass. I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna cover any more space than what you'd expect for what's there now.
Probably.
Yeah, but, uh, it'll be safe equipment. It'll be new equipment. And I think it'll draw a lot of kids and families into that park that we've, you've never seen before.
Awesome. And then, um, you're saying concrete border, is that like a six-inch thing or like a, it's not a wall?
Adam?
It says, it's, it's a sixteen by six concrete border that'll be just exposed enough, uh, to get the soft fall in there and, and kind of make a containment area, but still ADA accessible.
Say sixteen inches or that some of it's buried?
Yeah, buried. Yeah, yeah. No, it's buried. Yeah, the majority of it will be buried. There'll be maybe three inches of it that stick above ground.
Okay, awesome.
That's a good point though. You don't want a wall.
Well, I was just trying to picture it and I.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and then, uh, I guess Adam and Abigail, the pour-in-place, um, is that cost about what we had estimated or put in the budget for this year or? Yeah, it would be the same.
Yeah, so we had seventy-seven thousand dollars, uh, budgeted for this year. The pour-in-place, uh, came in at eighty-six thousand and I've been working with, uh, Chris as well on that. Um, and, and I'll be back to talk to Council about, um, the, 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 the overage on, um, the pour-in-place.
Okay, thank you.
Adam, Adam, there's a couple of trees that are there. There's also a bench over on like the right-hand side. Would the trees be removed in order to accommodate this new expanded structure?
No, no, no trees will be removed. And I think like Mike had mentioned, there's a merry-go-round, a swing set, uh, and a slide there now. The new structure would basically encompass what that is covering right now. Those are kind of spread, spread out in an area. So it would just be a more kind of uniform fitting, uh, uh, setup with this, with, with the new playground equipment.
The park itself has more potential if it was flat. It's not quite flat, but I mean, you could actually have a kid's soccer field on one end of it, even with this there. But it's, it's slopes, you know, so that it would not be fair for the kids to run uphill, you know, for half a game, I guess, but, uh, yeah. But it's really impossible to go in and rip all that out and for that, uh, when probably not necessary. But a lot of green grass still will remain, yeah.
Well, thank you so much again to the club and to you, Mike, for your leadership on this and adding to the list of zillion projects you spearheaded and we sure appreciate it.
We will be back next year. Just expect for the Jackson Park project. It won't be as extensive as this because it's a, um, we're proposing a park that's gonna be just to the east of the restrooms.
Okay.
Okay, that, there's a little flat area there. That's where we're proposing to put the new handicapped and toddler equipment. And, uh, we're also looking at a tubular slide that's using the topography of the hillside where they can actually go into this tube and slide down in a tube, uh, down the hill and, uh, yeah, it should be a lot of fun. Yeah, sure. Anyway, um, may I make one more?
Yes, you may.
Comment, thank you. I think we're done with this? Are we done with that?
I think we're done with this.
Okay, thank you.
So, good evening, Mayor Blackburn, council members. My name's Kenny LaPointe. I'm Executive Director of Mid-Columbia Community Action Council. Um, I think you all know what we do, um, but I'll remind you in case you don't. Um, I think the last time I was here was probably the beginning of this year to talk about the Mid-Columbia Houseless Collaborative Strategic Plan. Uh, so this is a little bit of an update on some of the stuff that we at MCAC have going on. Um, and as a reminder, we serve Hood River, Wasco and Sherman Counties. We provide utility assistance, weatherized homes, housing assistance, so, um, helping prevent evictions, provide housing case management and homeless services. So, uh, we run, um, a couple of shelter sites, um, and I'll talk about those projects, um, here in a minute. Um, so I always kind of like to remind folks of our mission as an agency, which is to build a better future for our community through partnership and equity-centered programs which prevent and eliminate poverty and houselessness. And this here is, um, the slide is, um, uh,
I think you've been sharing that screen.
Gotcha. My kids were here, they could show me. There we go. That's working. Okay, so, um, I like to show this slide to kind of give a vision of what we're trying to accomplish as an agency. We're not just running shelters to run shelters. We have a plan behind what we're doing and, and, um, our goal is really at the end of the day to get folks into permanent housing through our shelter system. Um, we sort of start out with emergency shelter. We have our shelter site here in Hood River, the Hood River Shelter, which I'll give an update on. We have the Gloria Center, which I'll also give an update on. Um, and then sort of the next step from there is transitional housing or transitional shelter. Um, many of you know that we've been working on the Annex or the former Oregon Motor Motel. Some of you came to our, um, grand opening that we held back in October. Um, that's our transitional shelter where we work to provide housing case management services to folks who are there and get them placed in a permanent housing out of that, um, out of that site. And then again, the end goal is permanent housing placement. So we're trying to get folks into permanent housing so we end the need for shelter, um, long-term. So we, we, shelter is a Band-Aid to our bigger housing, uh, problems that we're experiencing. Our goal is to get permanent housing completed. And we have a couple of projects that we're in partnership with Columbia Cascade Housing on, trying to get those, those projects, um, developed. We have the Shinnawith, uh, market site in the Dals, which we are gonna be applying for funding for this year. Um, we applied for it last year, um, but it's fortunate that we got the Rand Road project done. Um, we hope that we can get the Shinnawith Market Site, um, done this next year. We also have, um, which I'll, again, talk about in a second, but the Gloria Center and Navigation Center Site. We're only using half of that site for the Navigation Center. We've actually subdivided that and we have another about 1.2 acres on that site that we hope to build permanent supportive housing on. In fact, we just, um, a couple of months ago, completed a permanent supportive housing institute training and technical assistance program alongside Columbia Cascade Housing, the Mid-Columbia Housing Authority and the Mid-Columbia Center for Living. And, um, by going through that technical assistance program, that puts us in prime position. In fact, you have to go through that program in order to receive state funding for permanent supportive housing development. Um, so just a reminder about the Mid-Columbia Houseless Collaborative. This collaborative is made up of over forty different agencies from throughout the region. Um, as part of the Houseless Collaborative, we have the City of Hood River, County of Hood River, Sherman County, Wasco County and the City of the Dals with MCAC playing the lead entity over the Houseless Collaborative and really doing the coordinating. We set up an Office of Housing Stabilization. Our Director of that office is Kelly Horvath and then, um, our Resource Development and Community Engagement Coordinator is Sarah Kellums, who's sitting right back here. Um, the collaborative has done some great work since we released our strategic plan earlier this year. Um, some of those accomplishments are gonna be highlighted, um, in a couple of minutes with the Gloria Center and with the Annex renovation. Um, we've also been able to pull in quite a bit of resource through that collaborative. And thanks to Sarah's hard work on the ground, getting, um, fundraising done, um, writing grants. I think we've generated more than a million dollars in additional revenue from, um, Sarah's work, um, on resource development. In fact, just earlier today, we were at the Hood River Shelter Site and were presented with a twenty-seven-hundred-dollar check from our Photos with Santa event that took place a couple of weeks ago at the Hood River Hotel. And just kind of a reminder around the Houseless Collaborative, um, City of Hood River was part of, um, the MOU signing. Um, each local government, um, signed on to that MOU. We have an advisory committee that is, um, made up of a member of each of those governments. Um, Councilor Rivera is our advisory, the advisory committee member from Hood River. Um, and then Arthur Babbitts is the, the member from Hood River County. Uh, the goals in that plan are, are around shelter, services, housing and advocacy, which we really feel are the primary areas that the collaborative, um, should be focusing. So an update on the Gloria Center, um, I've been talking about this project for a couple of years now. Um, and there's actually stuff happening, which is very cool. Um, this is sort of the original concept. You can see, um, the, the architectural rendering of the project. Um, this is a, going to be a multiple, multiple agency use space, so sort of a one-stop shop. We have um, multiple agencies that are gonna be located in this site. Our main office in the Dals will be moving to the Navigation Center once it's completed. Uh, the Mid-Columbia Center for Living will have an office there. One Community Health, we've actually built out a, um, big parking spot for the La Clinica Mobile Medical Unit to come on-site regularly. Um, the Columbia Gorge Health Council and the Bridges to Health Program is going to be located on the site. And She-Wana Housing is moving their offices into the Gloria Center. Um, the Oregon Human Development Corporation will be moving their Dals offices into the Gloria Center. And then the Department of Human Services will do eligibility determinations out of that site as well. So we're all sort of co-locating in one spot, creating easier access, um, in the region for folks who, um, want to come on-site and receive services. Additionally, we have our emergency non-congregate shelter that's being staged there. Um, what we're doing with that emergency shelter is a little bit different than what we had originally planned, which we had originally planned to have that shelter be a twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day shelter. With the acquisition of the Annex, um, we have changed that, uh, model and we're, we're going with an emergency non-congregate shelter. Um, non-congregate meaning we're not putting everybody in one room, but they have their own space to go to. Um, so we're creating this emergency shelter for both wintertime weather purposes as well as summer, um, if there is heat events. We also were fortunate enough to receive a, it's called a CREP grant. I don't remember what the acronym stands for, but it's a Community Resiliency Grant, um, from the Department of Energy, Oregon Department of Energy. So we received that grant, um, a few months back, which is allowing us to put a full solar array and battery backup system on this building, um, which makes it, it will make it, um, a community resiliency center. So if the power grid goes down, folks can come to the Gloria Center, um, and have a safe place to go with the lights on and the heat on or the cooling on, um, whatever it might be. So it's not a concept anymore. It's actually under development and these are pictures from a couple of weeks ago. So we've actually made progress since, um, since this time. In fact, this, that's the front of the, the entry to the building there. Um, there's actually siding on that. We have, um, I'm hoping most of our roof is on. We were delayed a little bit with the snow that we had, um, uh, about a week and a half ago, but um, half the roof was on at this point in time. Um, all the windows are on. Um, this thing will be fully sealed in within the next month and they'll start doing interior finishings on the building. This was a pre-engineered steel building, so it kind of came on-site like an erector set and just got put up within about forty-five days. It became a real structure, which was super cool to see because it was just a, a muddy site for a long time, um, that they were moving, moving dirt around. So it's very, very cool to see this project get up and running. Um, the other image there is actually the multipurpose room, which is going to be sort of a conference room, can be used for community meetings, can be used for events. Um, so we're looking forward to have some nice space to host, um, community events at. Um, the picture, the one picture is the parking lot, which we got that thing poured just before we had, um, a, a freezing event. So we were fortunate to get that done, um, in time, um, because that would have stalled out some of the work, um, going into the wintertime and the site right now would just be a muddy, muddy mess. So we're, we're glad that we got that done. We did, um, move the pallet shelters, um, over to the site a couple of weeks ago. Got those moved from the prior location. Um, they are not set in the places they're going to be. Um, they're, they are tilted in the image that I'm showing. Um, they will be, um, positioned better, um, once they're finally set down. And as a reminder, we have a partnership. Uh, we, we received some congressionally delegated spending last year to convert the pallet shelters into stick-built tiny homes through a partnership with the Construction Trades Program at the Community College. So the Community College will be building those tiny homes, um, in their climate-controlled facility and then bringing them down one at a time on a jig and replacing the pallet shelters with those stick-built tiny homes. We will take the pallet shelters and we plan to put them into storage and use them in emergency response situations. So when we have our next, um, disaster, wildfires, whatever it might be, we can mobilize the pallet shelters and take them to wherever the impacted community is and provide short-term housing. Um, it could be for people who are displaced or it could be for wildland firefighters who need a place to stay. And we also have, um, our shower and restroom trailer that can be mobilized to that same effect. So we're really looking at preparedness for disasters. Um, when I was working for the state, I, um, was there during the Labor Day wildfires of twenty-twenty and I was the wildfire recovery council chair and I can tell you it wasn't fun sitting there saying we're not prepared for this. And I told myself I didn't want to be in that position and wanted to make sure, um, I set things up as best as possible so that we could respond in an emergency. Um, this is the front side of the building from the street. You can see that we have siding on it, um, on that front side. The roof is actually going on in that picture there, um, as well as the insulation. So it's well underway and we anticipate opening the Gloria Center in March of twenty-four and look forward to sending an invite to all of you. The next project, which kind of like snuck up on us and it was a surprise, it was, um, a blessing to, to get, but we were awarded, um, a Project Turnkey Grant, um, earlier this year, actually at the end of, um, twenty-twenty-two. We acquired the Oregon Motor Motel in the Dals and, uh, we acquired it on February first of twenty-three and since that time, we've been doing a large-scale remodel on that facility. Uh, for those of you who came to the grand opening, you saw the, um, sort of end result of that remodel and we are very proud of this, um, this building, these buildings, this facility. Um, it's the entry to downtown. It's the first thing you see when you come into the Dals. Um, I believe it's one of the nicest-looking buildings in downtown the Dals. When you come in, we wanted to make sure that we were living out that mission of creating a better future for our community and doing that through how we, um, designed the build-out of this project. We did everything from replace, replacing the roofs, um, to putting on new windows. Um, we did a full stucco, um, remodel on the outside. So the, the stucco was, previous stucco was in really bad shape. Put new, um, PDHP, um, heat unit. Put new um PDHP um heat units, heat and air conditioning units in all the rooms. We converted a couple of rooms to um accessible rooms. These rooms were not accessible before, so we did some conversion on some rooms. Um, and the really cool part about this facility is it's two separate buildings. Um, and being that the buildings are separated, they look like different sites. They operate like different sites. This allowed us to put the first family shelter on our side of the gorge in the region. So um we have families that have moved into the family side of that shelter. Um, what's interesting is prior to us opening that family side of the shelter, we were placing families in this hotel um through hotel vouchers. So now we have a much nicer facility. We also did new flooring, um painted all the in interiors of the units. We did bathroom remodels, um some some light bathroom remodels, a lot of plumbing work um to get these units um up to snuff and um create a better place for folks to to live. Um, we have onsite case management services. The La Clinica Mobile Medical Unit is out there every Tuesday providing health services. Um, Mid Columbia Center for Living is hiring a couple of caseworkers that will be located on the site. Um, we're doing health plan enrollment. We're also now starting to bill Medicaid for services that we're providing through community health workers out of the site. Um, I'll tell you that this environment, this living environment, we're very grateful to have the pallet shelters, and we're glad to be operating those here in Hood River. This is a game changer for folks, and it provides a much more dignified living environment. It gives them their own independency. It gives them their own place to shower. They don't have to go outside in the middle of the cold and go to the shower trailer to take a shower or use the restroom. Um, anywhere between, at any given time, between forty and sixty percent of our clients are seniors. Um, and having to go outside in the middle of the night is pretty tough. We've, I've noticed a physical change in the way people are um who are staying. A lot of the folks in here moved over from our pallet shelters, and they physically look healthier. They're doing better. We have a food pantry that we've set up there. We're receiving food from Gorge Grown, and we're also um partnering with Meals on Wheels to provide daily meals for folks who are at the site. So things are changing. I think we already have six folks that have transitioned, six households that have transitioned from the Annex into permanent housing since we've opened up. In fact, we had one, a veteran um household who transitioned the first week that we were there. Now, um as far as the Hood River Shelter goes, I think you all probably saw emails going out saying, we need staff, we need staff, and hiring continues to be a challenge in the region. It's been a challenge at the Annex as we're still looking for additional staff there. Um, and we were struggling to um get applicants for the Hood River Shelter. Uh, we were planning on opening on November fifteenth. Um, we were just behind that. So fortunately, we didn't have any crazy weather, and we were able to get open on November twentieth, right before Thanksgiving. Um, and we've been open since that date. Um, currently, the shelter, I believe we had two folks who moved out this last weekend, so we do have two beds available um as of today, but we've been full the entire time other than that. Um, again, we have um restrooms, um shower trailer out there. We also have laundry. Um, our shower trailer includes a laundry room as well as um showers and restrooms. Um, we're also coordinating multiple um different partners at the site, making sure that we're getting services to the clients. And again, our goal is to get folks into permanent housing. Uh, under long-term opportunities here is to try and acquire a permanent site for a satellite navigation center where we could potentially move this shelter to and also put co-located offices on that same site. Um, creating sort of, you know, the more dignified living environment is our goal. We would love to do something similar to what we've done in the Dells in Hood River um for for that sort of purpose. Also having a shelter, one of the things when I came on was advocated for a shelter being year-round because we knew that if we were just providing twelve hours of shelter, where there was no connection to other services, and you would end up serving those same clients the next season. Um, we do provide services to get folks into permanent housing here, but if we had something that was longer term, it would give us more ability to stabilize folks. That's it for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. I guess I should also mention, um because I don't think we've talked about um that, is um you all probably saw the notification, um and I just need to acknowledge it, that um on June thirtieth of this year, um well, last last winter season, MCAC had an operations agreement with Hood River Shelter Services to run the shelter site here in Hood River. On June thirtieth of this year, we completed a merger acquisition of Hood River Shelter Services. That was a collaboration that went on for a couple of years. Our, both of our boards were meeting over that couple of year period to sort of stage out um this merger acquisition that took place. Um, it was very collaborative. The Hood River Shelter Services Board, we so appreciate their service to the community and running that shelter site for the time that they did. Um, and we're glad to to carry the torch forward. We do still rely on that board um as well as Sarah, who's now with MCAC. Uh, we rely on um that board to continue to help us to make sure we're running, running things correctly, and they continue to help with things like facilitating meals from the many restaurants in Hood River that help support the shelter. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Kenny, for all your work and for being here with us tonight. Questions, comments?
One, thank you for being here, and every time you come, it's amazing to see the progress you've made. So thank you so much for all the work you and and your organization are doing, because it is astounding to see the growth and the services being provided. Um I guess my one question is, obviously, so there's been all this work in the Dells and and kind of in your your step stool of stuff, you know, of of growth into permanent housing. Some of that service is not in Hood River, but is in the Dells. And I'm wondering, how are you seeing that interaction? Are people able to access those services from here? Are there needs that are being met that would allow people to be able to access that better?
Yeah, that's a great question, and thank you for the nice comments. Um, we have some folks who have come to the Annex, for instance, to receive um so services and shelter. When the Hood River Shelter opened, they opted to come back. And so I, there is a preference that um folks from Hood River, their preference is that they be able to remain in the community that they're a part of. So that is why we would love to see a longer-term uh solution. We're, we currently have a lease agreement with the landowner of the existing shelter site. Um, we've, we've tried to make some moves to see if um they would be willing to sell, but it it there's other plans in the future for the owner, so we would really like to find something here that we could. Um, that's sort of like our next goal is to get something going here that we could um, you know, build satellite navigation center, have co-located services. We're partnering with Center for Living to do such a thing. We just need a place. Um, we need a site that um would work for it. Um, it doesn't need to be, they need to have building on it yet. Um, it just needs to be something that we could plan out and build out. So we would love to be able to do something here. I mean, I would love to have another hotel because I think it works really well. And again, it provides a dignifying environment, but um if we can find a site, we would love to do that here.
I I was just gonna ask about um what are the steps to the Hood River Navigation Center, but but I think you answered all that stuff. And uh just my appreciation as well. I I thank everyone in the Council that that we have such a strong partner and, you know, long, long roots in in the community. That's great. So, thanks.
And we do, we do have some resource available to us right now to purchase the site, so. Yeah, we're looking.
Uh, Kenny, thank you for your leadership. Sarah, thanks for being here as well. Appreciate all the services that MCAC is doing out there right now and making a tremendous impact in those who are having some challenges. Appreciate that it's a centralized location where a variety of partners can come in. No one entity can do it all on their own, and the collaboration and just the partnerships that you're helping build are really fantastic. So we've already talked a little bit about how could we replicate such models here in Hood River? How can we as a council continue to support MCAC and the efforts moving forward?
Great question. I think I think Counselor Saunders asked this as well last time, too. Um, you know, at some point in time, I I think there could be a financial need for support. Um, and to be honest, I'm a little hesitant to like even to even talk about a future site in Hood River with the council because the public is out there. And, you know, one of the things that you can do is support us when we have to defend it because it's gonna happen.
I think it's also incredibly important, even from coming from you, Kenny, that you can have all the services possible, and you still can force people to tap into that service. So I think it's incredibly important to also just highlight some of the success stories that that have happened. Um, I know that the news art, uh Columbia Gorge did a really nice article on that veteran that, you know, I think sometimes there are misconceptions of what a houseless individual looks like, or that there's stigmas of what they what activities they choose to engage in, and that's also really important for all of us to be debunking those myths that take place that that we, in general, we can't force anyone to tap into a service that they're not ready to do so.
Yeah, defend us, please. Um, and this year, um, we've, uh, our most recent report showed that we've housed um ninety-five folks um in twenty-twenty-three coming out of homelessness, and that was from the beginning of November. In two thousand twenty-two, we housed a hundred and fifteen people coming out of um houselessness. And um, you know, a lot of the folks that we have, like at the Annex, at the Hood River Shelter, they're actively working to get into permanent housing. Many of them have jobs. The article that you're referring to um is a an individual who's staying at the Annex who works at Columbia Gorge Toyota. Um, one of the, you know, they they were sort of opposed to our projects um at the onset, and and now they have an employee who is a great employee um who works for them. So um, we're really emphasizing, you know, getting people into permanent housing. We have folks who are still on the streets who are service-resistant, and um that's really tough. We want to be able to serve um everyone, but we we sort of have to hold the line because we have um community expectations. When folks come into our shelter system, we want to make sure we have a safe place for the community, for our staff, and for the other shelter clients. And so that's really important that we maintain a safe, a safe um dignified environment for them to be in. But we've had so many successes, and we're working on, um Sarah is actually working um with our lived experience work group on um highlighting some of those success stories, um putting them on video, um getting them them up. We've, we've made it um you know, really, we've tried to be really consistent with highlighting those successes that we've had.
My last comment or uh ask is, would you share that those success stories? I mean, I've seen what that looks like, but it would be nice to share that with Jackie and then have that distributed through our social media platforms. I think, Sarah, whenever you start having those videos ready, that it would be important for folks to share that because that could help with some uh misassumptions that people may create around what a houseless individual looks like.
Absolutely, and and um I know that we have some ready right now that are on, that are written stories that we did as part of the Houses Collaborative strategic plan. So we have those ready, and we can make sure we get those over right away.
Other comments, questions? Thanks again, Kenny.
Thanks for having me. I don't know how to shut that off.
Okay, so back to the
Next item is an informational session on jurisdictional transfer. Let me um, which is important in that, when we get that queued up. Yeah, so jurisdictional transfer. Um, as we finalize the Heights Streetscape Plan, there's often questions raised about uh jurisdictional transfer and and its process. So I wanted to have this informational item to kind of set aside some time to make sure just some basic information and basic shared understanding and also engage in questions um if you have. So uh, I'll talk about uh background and reasons for jurisdictional transfer, the basic framework of jurisdictional transfer um with proviso that every jurisdictional transfer is unique, and then uh talk next steps and and future considerations to keep our eye out for. So uh perhaps going too far back in history, but to the very beginning, uh in nineteen seventeen, thirty-six original highways uh were designated, most of them uh unpaved. And uh preceding the state highway system, there is a system of market roads, really is um that concept of this is for commerce, this is for moving goods and people in between uh communities.
And if I could just interrupt, if you want to go east of the Dells in Wasco County, there's a ton of market roads. It's super interesting and evocative to be out there like, oh my gosh, Mr. Rhythm. Like all the hay of this, okay, like it feels, I feel that market road thing.
Um, so uh now designated highways approach nearly uh two hundred routes, and they're uh governed by the Highway Design Manual, which is about one thousand four hundred page of de- design standards meant to have kind of a uniform and consistent look and feel, um so people can um safely traverse around um the state and kind of understand how the roadways work. Um, and so here locally, the Hood River Highway was uh designated as a secondary state highway in uh nineteen thirty-one, so Route two eighty-one, and it was um previously uh West Side Market Road number three. Um, and kind of all this history is just to illustrate that it's ever-changing and um highways go in and out of being designated highways, and it's all based on their um evolving use. Um, so reasons why you would transfer a roadway, um this is in the uh Handbook for Transferring Roads from ODOT. Um, if it supports the statewide movement of goods and the state is better able to modernize um and preserve the roadway in a manner fitting in like inter-community uh transportation. And then the reason to transfer a roadway back to a city is if it's um primarily for local uses and not needed as an essential link to the highway system. Um, so how does um, how does that uh correspond to our local um local conditions? Uh, well, this was an image looking north along Twelfth Street, um looking towards the intersection of Pine, um back when this was a market road uh into town. And so today, it's now not a road leading into town. It's a uh business district of its own uh with uh restaurants, uh retail, uh professional services, ser- serving uh primarily local needs. And it's also uh not the most efficient truck route uh any longer. So if you um route to the interstate anywhere east of the Hood River, you're gonna get routed onto Oregon thirty-five. If you try to route to the interstate um west of Hood River, you'll probably get routed onto Country Club Road. And even if you route from um the southern um city limits of uh Hood River, your fastest route is still to take Frankton to Mount Adams. And this um likely contributed to our finding during uh the traffic study that we did for the Heights that only two-point-four percent of traffic volume uh going through the Heights was um heavy trucks. And also, uh as a side note, I think emphasizes the importance of Mount Adams uh and Cascade Intersection as we move into the West Side District, just how important those improvements will be. So no longer really a thoroughfare for uh movement of goods. But it also now is becoming a a low um uh local vision is coming to fruition. Um, it no longer uh prioritizes just the needs of throughput, uh but our Heights um Streetscape Plan balances the various user groups um that use the district. Um, and this local vision does not meet the state highway standards in that fourteen-hundred-page manual. So we could individually um look for ODOT, ODOT design exceptions, but that will complicate and and slow the heights implementation process, as well just generally needing to permit projects on someone else's roadway versus we can move quicker if it's already under um our jurisdiction. Um, and then lastly, we have funds available through the Urban Rental Agency that show not only do we have a local vision, we have the means to make it a reality. So kind of let last checkmark uh with the state for, you know, why this should be not a state highway, um because we can really make the local use um tangible. So um now getting into the basic framework, um so that's kind of the checkmarks that all the reasons why this should be transferred. Now, what does it look like to transfer? Um, so first you define your boundaries, and we think that a logical boundary is from just south of Oak Street to just north of um Pacific Avenue. That uh avoids any islands of remaining state highway kind of being just detached from the other state highway system. It avoids responsibility for the traffic signals at Pacific and Oak. Um. Uh, and it encompasses the project area. So if we did um this transfer boundaries, it would add one point three uh miles of roadway to um our responsibility, which is about a two point two percent increase. Um, although very heavily traffic roads. Uh, step two is to document maintenance responsibilities. And this is still being done. This is in process, but. Things that we know that we do is one, we enforce parking restrictions, um our public works crews. Clear stormwater drains um and catch basins. They paint the markings for parking, they street sweep. Uh, and also they uh plow and sand in partnership with ODOT um during the winter. Um, but that really, I think, notes kind of that that local versus state uh difference. If you look at our snowplow map, uh twelfth and thirteenth are priority number one streets. Um, on ODOT's map, it's a service level D. Because their priority is the interstate. And then thirty five and then Highway twenty six, you know, they'll get to twelfth and thirteenth. When convenient. And uh. Yeah, and that really also corresponds to maintenance work. Um, so this is a secondary highway. Which means it that's where it ranks and how how it scores when it's fighting for ODOT maintenance dollars and for improvement dollars. And I think that's why you see kind of twelfth and thirteenth in the state that they are is just that it's. They're not gonna, they're not gonna score highly uh when ranked on a statewide system, but they obviously locally are very important to us. Um, so with all this information, we uh perform cost analyses, so. What would it uh cost to bring the roadway up to state of good repair? What are ODOT's existing capital improvement plans? Like, what are they already planning to do on that and toss that out? Then we can also estimate how much ODOT is expecting to spend on on maintenance. Bring all that together to get it to get a dollar amount, a discrete dollar amount. Um, to be the start of negotiations. Um, but it's very important to keep in mind that ODOT doesn't have a line item for jurisdictional transfers. You know, this, if this rate ranks slowly on their maintenance list, they they weren't going to maintain it anyway, so. There's not really money to transfer us, transfer to us to maintain it. Um, but it's a good starting place for negotiations. Um, so these negotiations uh can be quick. I think it can last very long. Um, uh for Oak Street, we were able to transfer that in less than six months. Um, ODOT retained the responsibility to do. ADA crosswalks and also to do one last overlay. Uh, but no funds exchanged hands. Um, so I think that's kind of on the fastest track. To a few examples of other tracks. Uh, Southernland's uh process uh took three years. Uh, and really even started uh visioning a a little bit ahead of that time. Uh, to transfer eighty second Avenue in Portland uh took four years. And that was really um unstuck uh by COVID relief funds that were designated uh by the legislature. Um, eighty million dollars came in to bring the the roadway up to a good standard. Um, and that's really um. Kind of what finished that negotiation off. And then in Tigerd and Hall Boulevard, their four years and counting. Um, Tigerd had a uh bill in the legislature that required ODOT to bring their roadway up to a state of good repair. Transferred to Tigerd and allocated fifteen million dollars uh to do so. And that bill uh was left in ways and means at the end of uh the session, so did not become law and leaving Tigerd without really a next step. Um, so our next steps and some of the future considerations given this information. Uh, one, we are in active uh communication with ODOT. Really from the beginning of the Heights Streetscape Plan, we've been keeping them in the loop and uh meeting with them, keeping them abreast of what's going on. We had a meeting with them in November to present the preferred concept plan. Uh, and also just kind of get them ready that. Get ready, we want to engage with you soon. And now we're uh working uh to schedule initiation of. Scoping uh negotiations, so basically um creating an MOU deciding. We both agree that we're looking for an agreement. And that would come um back actually to the city because that's what the city in ODOT. Um. But also, there's this separate track. Of a jurisdictional transfer advisory committee. So this committee was created by House Bill twenty seven ninety three in twenty twenty three. So that was the same session where Tigerd's bill um died in committee, and I suspect these two are connected. That maybe the legislature didn't want to take these on an ad hoc basis and thought, let's let Tigerd wait and let's create a standardized process to handle these. Um, this jurisdictional transfer committee um will. Uh, accept uh create an application process, accept and recommend uh accept transfer jurisdictional transfer applications from local jurisdictions. And make up to three recommendations to the state legislature for appropriations. Um, and even numbered years, so. Conceivably, they would make their first three recommendations by September fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Um, they've only held one meeting so far, and it was basically organizational setup, so. Who's going to be chair, who's vice chair, how will we make decisions, things like that. Uh, but I'll be watching this closely and making sure we're on the ground floor to get in there. This is not the sole and only. Route to a jurisdictional transfer, but this appears to be the designated route set by the state legislature if we want direct legislative appropriations. Um, but that doesn't stop us from continuing negotiation on a concurrent track with ODOT, um otherwise and immediately. Um. Yeah, so that's kind of the state of staff's understanding today, but uh looking forward to answering any questions you have.
Um, when when we talked earlier, we talked about, you know, kicking off that cost analysis thing. Did, will will you come back to us and ask for approval to do that in a in a future meeting? Is that the?
Uh, yeah, I think even if it doesn't rise to the level of uh the contract authority. Like, just keep him a loop for sure.
Mm hmm. Got it, got it. Uh, let let's. I like when we go around the horn, just to, I remember to get the people on on Zoom, so we'll go the other way. Tim, you're first.
Well, as always, excellent presentation and analysis. I super appreciate it.
Thank you.
Cool. Uh, Heather.
Oh, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, the legislative route with the advisory committee, if they're only doing three of them. Every even number year, and who knows how many apply across the entire state. Would this be of adequate size to be approved, or do we want to make it bigger? This is not a question you have to answer. It's a question I'm just putting into the ether of the universe.
Yes, and I would only be able to answer by, you know, reciting what's in the in the. Bill that created the legislative committee, but it didn't set any of those boundaries or preferences about size.
Yeah, I I find the number three to be somewhat arbitrary in nature in terms of the number of jurisdictional transfers they're going to approve in any given year, but.
Counting the number three.
But maybe a really small one can just be like, we did three and one was only five million.
Yeah, I I understand they're doing that because of all the requests and the budget and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I get it, but. I was just voicing that uh observation. Thanks.
Thank you. In uh number three subsection B, it talks about. The ODOT's Surface Transportation Improvement Plan. In the conversations with ODOT, have they expressed that there's already? Plans for twelfth and thirteenth? Any sort of projects that we need to be aware of was my first question.
Yeah, so there, um, you know, we have our um. Uh, capital improvement uh plan in the back of our budget. So ODOT similarly posts theirs publicly, so you can go in there and just control, find Hood River. Um, we uh, there's the elevated sidewalk um project on May and thirteenth. But then there's also a lot of general projects that kind of just say. Improvements to OR two eighty one. And so I think maybe one way to approach that is to say this is X percent of. Oregon two eighty one, so give us X percent of that money that you had for the whole route. It's, I don't know, that's just kind of early thinking.
That kind of answers the following question I had around the funding. There is a section here in. In in the engaging in negotiations of ODOT potentially giving us money and then we could complete the work. Um, as part of the Heights Improvement Plan overall, but overall, it sounds like we still don't know, right? Like, we're, we still don't know what that.
Oh, what um they would owe us? No, we need to actually perform the state of good repair analysis and.
Um. I had another question. I forgot it, so. Come back.
Nothing to add at this time?
Um, more overarching question, but like, so we do a jurisdictional transfer. Does ODOT still have any role in reviewing or controlling what we do? I just feel like they've burned on so so many intersections before, like. Does this get them out of the way and we can actually do what we want or?
I know that it will continue, it will need to be continued to be signed OR two eighty one, and it must continue to support the dimensions. Of freight traffic. Uh, I believe other than that, it frees us up uh fairly. Clearly, but I don't want to say that as an absolute term. I I think we'll have to. Really sort that out through the um. Well, that will come to light through the negotiation process.
I have this stuff in the letter from ODOT that's in the back.
Uh, those are all the ways that. The Heights Streetscape Plan is.
The letter from ODOT.
This is the current list of everything that doesn't meet their standards, but I, yeah, I guess I just want to make sure if we're doing this, that we don't then do, you know. Whether it's Second and Oak or Ranayon Cascade of here's a decade of continuously redesigning every two years because something's changed and you have to pay two million more and. Like, if we're gonna do this, I want to make sure it's worth it.
It will avoid. ODOT will no longer be administering our projects, so that stops that issue of them coming back saying it's this much more money, it's this much more money. I guess instead it will just be our public works uh director saying it's this much more money.
Right, but it's ODOT's gonna be able to come back and say, oh, it doesn't need the design anymore. You need to redo it.
I I will make, I, we will figure that out during.
That was just my big question of like. What does this actually get us? So.
Anything else? Were, was there anything else you were hoping to?
Just information.
From us? Cool. Um, given that. I think we're to the. Oh, Heather, sorry about that. Oh, yes, she said no. Uh, but Heather, you do have an opportunity.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Okay, cool. Um, all right, we added a new item for you.
Yeah, thanks. I'll just stay standing here. So you said a quick administrator update. Um, you may recall in the um. Two thousand twenty two Affordable Housing Strategy, one of the um recommendations was to um. Provide uh direct construction subsidies uh either to the developer or for offsite improvements to help um support um. Housing production uh preferable housing types. Um, but the Housing Affordable Housing Strategy didn't put any sort of meat to those bones. Um, it's kind of left up to us to to figure out that program. Uh, so I was recently approached by Lambeth University to ask if we had any projects for a Lambeth MBA team, and I thought. This might be a good one for them, so I put in a project proposal to. Research what has been effective in other cities as far as developer incentives that have actually produced. Um, additional housing production in that eighty to one hundred percent. Of uh affordability index that, you know, isn't typically directly subsidized um um. By public entities and uh was selected, and so we're going to get a Lambeth MBA team to start work on that in January. Uh, end in April, and so they're going to research it, uh tailor any recommendations for the Hood River context. Uh, and then we can, you know, accept, reject, or just kind of take that uh for what it is and see if we want to incorporate it into the West Side uh five-year action plan.
Cool.
Yeah.
Uh, agency items. Megan?
Nothing.
Oh, nothing.
Nothing for me?
None.
Uh. Heather.
Um, I was just um thinking about my previous comments and thinking we have a meeting tomorrow for the port. And I will talk to them about if anybody has really strong feelings about the port. Um, staying on the Urban Renewal Board and I can um email discussion. Um, back to the board.
Awesome. Thanks. Uh, anything else, Heather?
Nothing else for me.
Oh, Tim.
Nothing for me, Mark.
Yeah, sweet, and I I don't have anything clever to say, so. Um, so the Urban Renewal Agency meeting is adjourned. Good, we'll reconvene.
Chairs and members of the uh Urban Renewal Agency Board. Uh, the first item today is um to queue up the discussion on reviewing the governance structure. Bylaws and agency administration. So this was a project that was included um in the FY twenty four budget assigned to uh this new position that I hold. And then that was also prioritized in the six-month uh action plan that we reviewed at last um last agency meeting. Um, so to queue up the conversation. Uh, I'm going to start with some quick context and background as well as the history here in Hood River as far as how the governance of the agency has changed over time. And then get into some considerations and recommendations as to uh how we can approach this topic. Um, so first, uh, really, uh. The um, the concepts of the Governance Board and the bylaws and and the uh. Cost allocation between uh um the agency and the city. It's really a tiered set of authorities that all flowing from the city council and the ordinance that they passed creating or modifying the agency. So um, the city of Hood River creates um the agency itself and the membership of its board. Um, but not only the membership of its board, it kind of creates all parameters of the agency. So for instance, the original um ordinance for the city directed the agency to uh. Initiate the feasibility of the downtown Urban Renewal District, so. Um, it can cre- create all the sideboards. Then the sideboards created by that original ordinance, the Urban Renewal Agency Board. Will then uh develop its own bylaws that might include uh an advisory committee but is not required to. Um, and then also uh work out a um cost allocation methodology with the city because. Functionally, the agency and the city. Um, from an outside perspective is the same entity, right? Same, same um building, same equipment, same staff. Um, so it needs to be worked out how to split costs. So here in Hood River, um, the board was originally uh three city council members. Uh, Port of Hood River and Planning Commission Representative, and then one additional appointed member. That was immediately changed one year la- later uh to include no city councillors. Um, but uh but keeping the Port of Hood River and Planning Commission Representative. Um, there was a major restructuring in two thousand and twelve. Um, after uh the year after the uh Heights District was first created. And that's when the city council came on as the governing board along with two Hood River representatives. And um the Planning Commission Representative was then moved to be. On the advisory committee along with um appointed folks on the advisory committee. Um, and so at that time, it was thought that um uh having a board of all elected members. Uh, would be able to kind of get more scrutiny scrutiny and better oversight uh to staff with appointed members, maybe better as a um. If I in a advisory committee capacity. Um, so now we're in two thousand twenty three, and it's very uh very candid two thousand and twelve. We have a brand new district. Uh, though uh created in the West Side. Its maximum indebtedness eclipses all prior districts combined. And also now includes areas of unincorporated Hood River County, which we've never operated before. Heights District is increasing in activity, moving from a planning stage to an implementation stage. And the downtown and waterfront districts, which originally held uh Port of Hood River properties, uh those districts are winding down in their activity. So it's natural time to uh review the governance structure. Um, and in addition, our MOU for cost sharing between the city and the agency is um about fifteen years old and also could be. Uh, due for a revisit. So the recommendations in your um packet recognize that tiered structure of authorities. Starting at the highest level and then moving down, we recommend. First, discussing uh governing board membership. And then once governing board is settled upon and agreed upon, then that governing board would then work on their bylaws. Uh, organization of uh advisory committees. Um, and then, once that's in place, everyone who would basically have a stake in how costs are. Um, allocated between the agency and the city would be there, able to opine on a on a reasonable cost allocation methodology. Um, so, you know, could happen as quickly as four meetings or longer as uh as needed to have have discussion and engagement. Um. So tonight, uh, you know, we have some uh information in your packet, so hopefully to um. Give enough background discussion, and I think some members have thought about this uh some already, but. Uh, if there's any initial policy preferences that anyone has tonight, that's useful to get out into the open because that will. Um, help focus future meetings. There's really innumerable combin- combinations of ways that a governing board can be put together and administration can be set up. There's really innumerable combin- combinations of ways that a governing board can be put together and administration can be set up. So it's not like there is you know, a discrete number of alternatives we can bring to you. So knowing those policy preferences ahead of time would be helpful. And then also get input on what is the desired level of stakeholder involvement? You know, this is to some extent a pretty dry topic, you know, it's pretty bureaucratic in nature. So doesn't, I don't know if elicit much sort of community in, in, you know, natural community engagement, but like to know, you know, do you want us to engage the uh, boards of overlapping districts? Advisory Committee, general public, kind of what is uh, what is the level of input and engagement you feel that you'll need in order to engage and make decisions uh, on these topics? So with that, I'll just um, open it up uh, for discussion.
Cool. Thanks, Will. Um, I, I have a, a question to begin with, and then what I'd like to do is go around the horn and then um, Will and I talked and I've been mulling this for a while. I have a suggestion. We'll see how that comes out as part of that discussion. Um, so, but the first question is since the, since the governing board uh, format is, is determined by the city council, is, is this is that not something that should be on a council agenda versus the agency?
Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, so the next step would be a city council item, not an urban renewal agency uh, board item.
So the agency board will recommend to council to say, we think we're recommending we change this format, basically?
Yeah, listening to the input of the board tonight. Um, and then moving forward, the next step would be a city council. Um, it's really the city council's decision of how they want to take that input and the next steps they want to take.
Gotcha. Um, that makes sense. So let's um, get you know, got, got level of reactions and, and where you think we should go and I'll start with uh, Megan and, and then go to the Zoom folks at the end. Megan?
Um, I mean baseline, uh, this, you know, with this founding of West Side and apparently it being ten to fifteen years, if not longer, out of date, I think this is a very good time to review all of this um, and make sense. The phased approach certainly makes sense. Um, general policy stuff, I saw that a lot of places don't necessarily have an advisory board from the community and I think that's been valuable for us to have. Um, I do think especially given we've got unincorporated county um, engaging the county probably on our board and potentially like Cat, you know, I know Cat's comment when we were founding West Side was making sure they stay engaged long-term. Um, I see value in, in bringing partner agencies along on our ride. Um, I don't know that I've thought much beyond those things, but there's my thoughts.
Cool.
Oh, nothing to add at this moment.
Yeah, just echoing what Counselor Saunders says. I think it's been incredibly valuable to have, you know, some level of ad hoc committees that do include community members to help advise and to make sure that they're staying um, in the loop of what's going on and then helping disseminate that information out into the community. It would be nice to have a conversation to see as we, as we look to continue to expand our partnerships and collaboration. Uh, i- is someone from the county willing and interested to do something like this and joining? Um, I would also really love to create space for Will. I mean, you've been doing a lot of research. You've been looking at different, different uh, cities and whatnot, like what are your overall recommendations? We've never had an urban renewal uh, director and now we do. So what do you foresee? How, how could this work out best as well?
Great. Um, I concur with my fellow counselors. Uh, one thing that I've always found interesting is that um, this, this by only incorporates one uh, overlapping jurisdiction, not the others. Uh, this is a, a form of involvement. I would, I would like to see um, the other districts also get involved in this conversation. Uh, perhaps not on the governing board level, but just as a, as a collaborative group. Um, most other cities run this through their city council and the city council makes all the ultimate decision, which is fine. Um, it, to me, the governance and the government, governance alone makes sense to keep it at, at that level and then incorporate everyone else's input on an advisory basis.
Excellent. He- Heather, any thoughts?
Hi, um, well, I was just thinking, um, once the waterfront is totally out of the picture, um, I just wonder, um, if having two port members on the board is necessary. Um, and um, I do like the idea of including um, other partners in the community to bring in, in, input outside of city council as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool. And thanks for having the Christmas tree in the, in the picture too. Um, and last but certainly not least, um, Tim?
I agree with all that's been said. Um, phased approach sounds good. Um, advisory committee, yes. I can see the efficiency in being able to hold fees concurrently with city council meetings and kind of uh, having all elected officials be on the governing board. So that way, decisions are not necessarily a two-step process. So that, those are my thoughts.
Cool. Thank you. And, and so, so for me, you know, especially given Will's report where most cities do just use the city council as the, as the um, as the administration board for the agency. I, I was going to suggest the same thing that's been suggested, which is simplify the agency membership to just council. And then really work on, on the advisory committee stuff to be A, more tightly integrated in with council than, than uh, than the advisory, advisory role to staff, which is pretty much what has been implemented as now. Um, and, and use that advisory thing to pull in CAD and the county and the, and the other agencies that are around. And Heather, if, if there's a future waterfront discussion, then of course the port would be uh, part of that as well. So um, keep agency super simple. And then, you know, two steps, two steps down, we would, we would work on the, how do we optimize the public input and the partnership input? So. Megan?
I, I mean, respectfully, I, I, I think there's, because you would have how you interact with and, and coordinate like a public input committee and other elected official partner agency committee, I do think is different. And so I do think combining those can create some mess and I do see some value in having some extra folks up here besides just us.
So, so you, you think having an agency board that's beyond council is?
That includes some other elected officials, you know, like we do right now. Um, is, is my thought, yeah.
And do you ever thought of?
I mean, county and CAD are the two I'd recommend, potentially parks given West Side, but I'm, I think that's you know, I wasn't prepared for full debate because I thought we were just saying, yeah, the process looks good, but uh, I think that's, that's open to conversation, including from the agencies of, do they want to be involved? But um, I think there is a different scale of if you're working with folks that need to get completely up to speed of what's the public process and what does this mean? And, and your job is really to talk to your customers and your neighbors, you know, on the heights is different than what someone from the county, like what the county is going to be bringing to a meeting.
And, and you, your gut feeling is that the advisory committee wouldn't?
I think it'd be very hard to have a committee that can meet both of those purposes, Will.
Right?
But again, I, I mean, I think we're starting a conversation not.
Yeah, and I'm just looking back and saying, okay, we've had, you know, two other people on the committee for, you know, my whole council life and it hasn't led to deeper discussions or what it is similar to you. I mean, so since two thousand and twelve, this, this was, um, so I, I guess I'm not convinced that it would make a difference as far as the depth of the discussion to add to, to the agency board. That makes sense?
Yes, I'm not sure that we haven't had a depth of conversation with our port commissioners on here.
That's fair enough. Um, so a- any, any other thoughts?
Yeah, I just want to hear from Will and like, what are, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, well, I think the, this discussion was really helpful. I'm hearing phased approach is good. Let's come with um, several different alternatives when we really dig into this and then it sounds like this might be more than one meeting where we kind of think through alternatives. And then if we do want to go with an alternative that's bigger than the city council, we decide, you know, how to do outreach to those overlapping districts. So steps are uh, forming in my head. Um, this one is, is not something where I could make a recommendations, especially at this board membership level. It's, it's so purely policy-driven with no um, particular best. Um, you know, I, I think it's a continuum of like the pure efficiency model is city council only and it's also um, the most common. Um, and then as you move, you know, across the continuum, which I think I could sort of point out logical discrete, discrete steps in that, in that continuum. When we talk about this again, um, is more additions, um, more advisory committee members. It just comes with that, that push and pull of um, kind of uh, focus and decision uh, uh, making direction versus casting the widest net possible and, and, and bring more people along, which brings more complication along as well.
I, I see two choices. One is we could make a motion to recommend something to council um, now, or we could just kick this council. I think that we have uh, unanimity that, that um, there, there will be a, you know, no one's arguing that we should keep it the same as what it is. Um, so we could, you know, put it on a, a future council agenda to, to start it from here, or we could if, if you go about that facility, we could just make a motion to make a recommendation and then council could still decide to, to uh, to talk about it differently. So, um, you want to kick to the council, I assume?
I mean, the suggested motion is just we begin the phased approach. Like, are you wanting to actually decide things tonight? Because I feel like we haven't had the conversations or.
And it would also be nice to hear from other, like from the county, right? Is anyone there willing and open to starting this level of collaboration and partnership? Before we make a recommendation to council to, is this how we should do it moving forward?
I, Paul, go ahead. Heather, as the person at this moment at greatest risk of not being on this board anymore. You said makes sense to not be the port. Did you have any thoughts about which agencies might make most sense to include?
Um, well, I liked the idea of um, like Parks and County since, um.
Parks and County. Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, I think to Megan's point, just doing the motion as, as stated, uh, gives us gives you stuff to do, right, Will?
Correct.
Right, that's, that's cool.
Then I'm going to move that staff begin a phased review of the Urban Renewal Agency's governance and administrative structures as presented during tonight's meeting and as in court by tonight's discussion.
Second. All right, we have a motion from Megan in a second. Great. Uh, any other discussion?
Um, I would just like to add that, um, I mean, obviously the port would want to be involved in any waterfront discussion.
Makes perfect sense. Uh, all in favor, say yes.
I.
I.
Me, me opposed? I don't see any, uh, and I vote as in, in approval as well. So there you go.